To order, will you stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, Rob?
Scott Benedict.
Here.
Cyndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
Alright, you all have before you the minutes from our January organizational meeting and the regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll some of.
Cyndra, do we have a second?
Second.
Scott, would you call the roll, Rob?
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I'd like to add that that also included the special meeting on January 30th.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess I didn't read it all. Sorry, thank you, Rob. Communications, I'm not aware of any public participation, so let's go to communications. Cyndra?
Okay, um, thank you. February is Career Technical Education Month, so there's been a lot happening at Fort County this, this whole month of February. And back on February 2nd, Fort County held an elected officials luncheon, so that was nice. I know our new mayor went and a lot of elected officials throughout the Fort County area showed up. They said they had a good time, was not present. Something that really fun happened last Friday, Fort County Career Center hosted the Regional Ohio Skills USA Competition. There were 28 schools, Career Tech Schools from the state of Ohio that were involved, which included 650 students competing in 34 skills. I'm excited to hear how Bryan students, I have not gotten my report, I've requested it, but Skills USA is a club serving the students in the area of trade and industry. So, um, they were really looking forward, the second year in a row, and it will, I think, go to Penta next year, not that much. And then parents' visitation will be coming up on February 28th. That's my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the Treasurers' Report and Recommendations. Rob?
Thank you. We'll start with our financial reports for the month ended January 31, 2018. Our cash reconciliation report, Farmers and Merchant State Bank, our balance was $2,727,303. Our outstanding checks and adjustments, $84,614. Investments at Star Ohio were $3,285,594. At Morgan Stanley, $5,286,976. And at the State Bank, $6,192,571. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,400. Our final total at the end of January, $17,415,229. Of that sum of money, our general fund balance at the end of the month was $12,279,560. Our bond retirement fund was $335,650. Our permanent improvement fund, $2,213,178. Our local, locally funded initiative portion of our building fund stands at $74,494. Our local share of the capital project fund for their building project was $1,292,109. And the state share of our building funds were $274,167. Our OSFC project maintenance fund for our buildings is $390,794. So it makes up some of our major balances, once again, $17,415,229 our balance at the end of January 2018. Our SM2 report, revenues at the end of January about $54,000 ahead of budget. Our expenditures are about $247,000 under budget, so we have a positive variance at this point in time, about $301,702. Any questions on those items? If not, we'll move on to our appropriations. Appropriation balance at the end of January is $37,793,294. And during the month of January, we had approximately $103,248 of changes to those appropriations. Any questions on the appropriation modifications? Next item is an item from the county budget commission on our tax rates. The bond retirement fund tax rate is at 7.45 mils. The voted millage for our general fund levies is 49.5 mils. Permanent improvement fund, inside millage is 4.4 mils. Altogether, those total 61.35 mils of voted millage. Our effective rate for rezag is 38.82, that's what is collected out of the 61.35 mils. And the commercial industrial rate is 44.58 mils as an effective rate. As far as the 20-mil floor, we stand at 20.373 mils. We're just slightly above the 20-mil floor on our general operating expense, levies. Any questions regarding the resolution for the tax levy, tax rates? If not, final item is a resolution to approve our service agreement with the Northwest Ohio Education Service Center for next school year. The estimated cost of those services will be $255,426. That is down about $50,000 from the current year, because we're looking to take a couple of items that they're handling for us now and move them in-house. The ESC provides us several different services relating, most of them special education, but independent center over where some of our behaviorally challenged students go, and that's probably one of the major costs of their services. Diana, you want to add anything on their services?
No, what you, as Rob mentioned, we're looking at hiring our own physical therapist versus paying the ESC to hire a physical part-time therapist for us, and we think that there could be some cost savings by going that route.
And finally, some donations. From W.P. Trotter, donation of $4,000 to our high school orchestra department. From Newland Quest Club, donation of $125 for our football program. From the Bryan Music Boosters, donation of $2,400 to the vocal department. And from our academic booster club, donation of $500 for youth and government program that's taking place this year. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, then I will entertain a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report.
I move that we accept the report.
Deb, we have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, please, Rob?
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not aware of anything under old business. We'll move on to new business. I don't know of any specific items, so we can move right into the superintendent's recommendations. Mrs. Savage?
Thank you very much. So you see before you, first of all, a list of students who have met all of the graduation requirements of both the Bryan City School District and the state of Ohio, and who are requesting an early graduation. So Brandon Gilbert, Alyssa McDaniel, Andrew Mottar Whipple, Brittany Ottstott, Andrew Seeley, Tierra Slaughter, Jacob Garza, Taylor Watkins, Alexis Brooks, and Blaze Richards will all have a graduation date of effective tonight, and we congratulate them on this high achievement and wish them the best in their next endeavor. We're, we have an MOU, we have three separate MOUs to approve, one with Wesley Church, one with the YMCA, and one with the First Assembly Church. And these would provide a temporary shelter-in-place evacuation center in the event of an emergency, which sadly, we once again kind of have to consider these options given what we see on the nightly news. But all three facilities were very open and welcome that in the event of an emergency, we could utilize their facilities on a temporary basis or a reunification center if needed. So those agreements are in your packet for review. You have the eighth grade trip to Chicago. The itinerary was shared with you. We ask board approval of that overnight trip. And you also have an agreement with Activate Healthcare. Activate is our consortium insurance-sponsored clinic here in Bryan, and we are going to start utilizing them for our random drug testing for our bus drivers and any other personnel that fall under the laws of random drug testing. It's going to be a significant cost savings to us, so we're very excited about this new partnership and the ability to utilize this service. And so those are the agreements and itineraries that I would ask the board to approve at this time, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I do, Diana, on the Activate Healthcare, that's a new service that we're going to start with?
It's a new agreement with this provider, so...
That's right, it's a new provider.
Yes, it's a new provider.
And do, does that include the testing for the athletes?
No, this is for employees. Yes, this is for employees only.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendations as Mrs. Savage has presented.
I'll so move to accept the recommendations.
Alright. Cyndra?
I'll second.
Alright, Scott, would you call the roll, Rob?
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Under student commendations, we celebrate the end of the second quarter with the All-A Honor Roll, as well as the high school and middle school All-A Honor Roll. We also celebrate the character trait of honesty for the month of January. And so you see your high school students of action for honesty. You have our Fort County Career Center Student of the Month, Alex Bruce. Kiwanis Students of the Month for both January and February. We were host site to the OMEA district, so we have our District One High School Honors Orchestra winners, our District One West High School Solo and Ensemble Event winners. And we also have our middle school students of action, our Ohio, OMEA District One Junior High Honors Orchestra. And I would like to highlight Ireland Moore. Ireland, out of her own initiative, took a chance on this Ohio Take Action video contest, and she placed in the top 10 in the state. And she is just a freshman and just starting out in one of our new courses, and I'm sure Mark will talk a little bit more about that, but our new VCT courses. So congratulations to Ireland. And then again, we continue to celebrate honesty at the elementary with our character trait commendations, our Gold Slip winners in PE, and our PBI Sportsmanship Award for being respectful, responsible, and safe to Mrs. Walker's classroom. And those are our commendations for this month.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the commendations as presented by Mrs. Savage?
So moved.
Deb, we have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, Rob?
Mike? Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Under personnel recommendations this month, I recommend to the board that we hire Sher Rob as a bus driver, 3.5 hours a day, zero years' experience, effective 1/16. And Jennifer Sampson, Bryan Elementary Aid, 5.25 hours per day, zero years' experience, effective January 29th. We have a transfer of certified staff. This is for next school year. These transfers will not happen until the beginning of next school year. Angie Davies to grade three math science teacher, Vicki Idenhauer to preschool itinerant teacher, Nicole Manahan to kindergarten intervention specialist. We have three resignations. Emily Nagy, Assistant High School Cross Country Coach, Gary Wildman, Bus Driver, effective 2/2 of 18, and Tim McQuade, School Psychologist, effective at the end of the school year on June 22nd. And then we have our spring supplemental contracts. Where you see percentages listed, so again, just as a clarification, we work within our contract. There are set supplemental contract amounts. If the coaches of that sport want to have additional coaches, additional adults, then they have to stay within the limits set in the contract. So they may choose to share or split some of those contracts so that they can get some additional help. And that's why you see the listing of the percentages. And then we have high school athletic department volunteers, Erica Collins and John Betts. And we did, and we're able to secure for this month some classified substitutes that we have added to our daily pool, so we're appreciative of that. Any questions regarding those recommendations?
Alright, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented by Mrs. Savage?
So moved.
Deb, we have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you please call the roll, Rob?
Scott?
Yes.
Cyndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, instead of reporting on things that are coming out of Columbus, I'd like to take a little bit of time to talk about some things that are happening locally. So one of the considerations I would ask from the board is there's currently a funding campaign going on, you may have seen it on social media, from the swim program, and it's, there's three entities within the swim program. There's our varsity high school sanctioned OHSAA swimmers and divers, which we sent off to Columbus today. We wish them the best in their state tournament. There's the YMCA swim program, and then there's the summer swim program. So they are looking to raise money to replace some of the starting blocks, the timing system, and the scoreboard. The three entities are already in a partnership. We already work together. We each donate or contribute $1,000 a year to the upkeep of the pool, to replacement of equipment, whether it be the lanes or whatever needs addressed. For the three entities work together. We did, as a board, choose in the fall to donate some funding to the Soccer Lights Program. So I just bring that to you for your consideration. I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but I do want to just make sure you're aware of that, and if you so choose to do so, we could take action in March to make a contribution to that, that fund. Are there any questions regarding that?
Tell me the three entities again.
It's the YMCA swim group.
Right.
It's the summer swim program, and then the high school sanctioned part.
What is it, how much is it they're trying to raise?
I believe they're trying to raise $75,000 total, and I know that they're doing, requesting donations through social media, and I believe that they're also requesting some funding through writing some grants and trying to secure funding that way.
What is their timeline around this fundraising program?
I think that their goal would be, I have not spoken to them directly, but I think their goal would be to have it in place for the summer, if at all possible. It's a little bit of a safety issue, too. They take the equipment back and forth between the summer pool and the winter pool, and it's wear and tear and safety.
How much did we give to the Soccer Lights?
I knew you were going to ask that, and unfortunately, I forgot to look that up.
$10,000.
Is that what we gave?
$10,000, $10,000. And that comes from where?
That came from the PI fund.
Any other questions? Okay. The second topic that I'd like to spend a little bit of time tonight discussing and answering any questions that the board may have is there, there is some confusion regarding our school calendar and snow days and calamity days. So I thought today would be a great opportunity to kind of bring our new board members up to speed and, and answer any questions that you might have. And hopefully, to be able to provide some information to the community on questions that they've raised. So I ask you to bear with me, because this is a long story. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt. I'll answer them as we go. So, back in the day, schools were always measured on a daily system. That's what we had to report to the state, that we were in session for X number of days. And within that timeline, varying depending on who was in charge of education, we had snow days. And we were allowed, at one time, only three, and then it was increased to five, snow days for schools. And anything beyond that, schools had to make up. Then the state changed the rules, and they changed the rules to hours. And it was widely advertised, and we, as a district, report to the state the number of hours that we are in session. We can't count recess, we can't count lunch, but we sub, we submit in our EMIS data all of the hours that we're in session. If we delay for two hours, we can't submit that. If we cancel, we can't submit that. So we only can submit the hours we're in session. And there are minimum number of hours required, different at kindergarten than at 12th grade, and it varies in between. So we have, I think Haley would say, 12 to 15 different school calendars that we track and we submit to the state for our reporting. About three or four years ago, we ran into a situation where it was a really bad winter. I think we had two really bad winters in a row, where we missed close to 20 days between fog, ice, temperatures, and snow. It was really bad. And people will probably remember that year because that's when we had blizzard bags. That's when we actually considered going to school on a Saturday. We ended up extending the day by 15 or half an hour because we needed to make up time. And at the end of that year, the staff wasn't happy, the board wasn't happy, it was just the parents weren't happy. Every, we, we needed a better plan. So we took that situation, and we sat down with our unions, and we did negotiate what we felt was a better plan. And this was negotiated two years ago. And so what we have agreed to, what the board agreed to at that time, is if we had to close school for anywhere between zero and five days, we were going to treat it just like in the good old days. Those were your snow days. Students didn't have to make up, staff didn't have to make up. It was what we were used to. The days that we would miss between day six and day 10, if we had to close, then those days would be made up with students as early as we could because of testing and wanting to get the education in. And so days, that's days six to 10, both staff and students, those are called our contingency days, and those are on our calendar every year and their board approved. If we were to miss day 11 to day 20, those are days that students will not be required to make up. We feel we will still be above the state minimum in time, but staff will report to work no later than 10:00 a.m. That gives time for roads to be cleared or any dangerous conditions unless there's a Level 3 snow emergency. If there's a Level 3 blizzard of 78, then we will tell staff to stay home as well. We eliminated blizzard bags from our formula because, to be honest, parents didn't like blizzard bags. They felt that it was too hard, too easy. I didn't, wasn't able to answer questions. Staff didn't like blizzard bags because some kids had internet access, some didn't. Some did the assignment, some didn't. It was just a lot of confusion. So we didn't put blizzard bags in our new plan. We, we did all of this organization, and keep in mind that this is what we chose to do. Other districts have made other choices, and that's okay, because it's a local decision. We're still compliant on the student side because we are way above the minimum number of hours. We're compliant with the staff side because this is what we've negotiated with our staff. So, at this point, and the, and the last thing I'll say, that some of the confusion centered around this year, there was a new rule for attendance, and we'd been telling parents that attendance is counted by hours, and so that kind of led to some of the confusion as well. Like, are we on hours or are we on days? Which is it? Why are we different from X school district in Williams County? But fire away, I'll answer any question that was not kind of on my sheet.
Making up the days, once we go past, what is it, five you said was the threshold?
Correct.
Making those days up is driven as much by the need to get classroom time in and have the students prepared for the testing that's going to be coming in in spring?
The, the board felt that it was important for students to be in school. They didn't want students to lose more than the five initial days, and then the board was willing to concede that we, we weren't going to be able to make up more than five days before state testing. So to keep kids here in June beyond day 11, 12, 13 was futile. That, that was our discussion at that point. This is a new board, you may have a new direction. You know, again, we approve these calendars every year, so it'll be an annual event that you'll participate in, and that's typically done in December, January timeframe for the next school year. So if, if you did want to make changes, if you were inclined to look at things differently, that option is definitely available.
We just made up two of the days.
We've made up two of the days. We have to make up one more, which we'll do on June 11th with students, and then we'll move our teacher and staff workday to June 12th.
Is there a place where, where you're saying the hours vary from a kindergarten to a 12th grader? Is that anywhere that we, I could see that?
It's on ODE's website.
Because the next question wouldn't matter because the hours are going to be different. So, so are all high school kids considered the same hours?
Yes, I believe so.
How far down does that go?
I think it changes at kindergarten and possibly between middle school, high school. I'd have to...
And then everybody, but then they're the same. So how many, so excluding the younger kids, the kindergarten, how many hours are, is a student supposed to go to school? Do you know?
I can look it up really quick.
I'm just curious. So then when you make up, how, so how many hours are in a day?
It depends on how many hours you go, not counting recess, not counting lunch.
Right, so...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you have to, and you have to remember, like, for example, kindergarten registration. I'll, I'll pick on kindergarten. So here, at kindergarten, we, the way we run our registration for the next year, our kindergarten students are not in session those two days, so we can't count those hours. So that makes us different from maybe another district that does registration. We do a phase in for preschool and kindergarten. So boys come one day, girls come one day. So we have to submit for the boys, and we have to submit for the girls. We can't submit for both. That's why we have about 12 different calendars, just because of those high school exams. Students get out early at high school exams, that's a different calendar, because we can't submit that time that they're not in session. Seniors get out three days before anybody else. We have to submit a separate calendar for seniors with exams.
I have the hours right here if you need them.
You do?
Well, so the...
You're faster than me.
The other question I have, though, is, so this is really all, all these cal, these hours, it's state-driven?
It's all, everything's driven by the state.
That has nothing to do with our district making the decisions?
No.
No.
No, it's still your local decision on how you meet. No, no. It's still your local decision on how you meet those minimum number of hours.
Those are the minimum. If we want to go more, we can go more, but there's that threshold that we have to cross.
Which our days are.
We do.
Mark, I'm curious. What are the minimum hours for, like, a high school student?
So high school is 1,001 hours in a school year. That's for grades seven through 12.
And, and, okay.
And then it changes for grades because we have a full kindergarten district. So grades K through six are required to go 910 hours in a school year. And we have just over, I guess for hours in a day, we have just over, at the secondary level, just over six hours in a day.
That's what I was going to say. And does that not count lunch, or does that count lunch?
I believe that's without counting lunch because it's like six point something because of the lunch, yeah.
So a day is about six hours.
Yeah.
And if I'm correct, recesses at the elementary are, there's a time on those. It's allowed for an A.M. and a P.M. to, but still...
We cannot, we cannot count the lunch recess. We can, we can count a recess, I believe we can count a recess that's like 10 minutes or... Yeah, but there are rules on what counts and what does not. Yes.
Assemblies and things like that, I mean, are those, if they're...
Assemblies are typically educational, so those can be counted. Homecoming Assembly would not be counted as educational time.
That's a full-time job, just managing that.
Pep sessions would not be counted.
Character trait programs where some of the kids are down there but some aren't?
Typically, those are educational because those are related to our P.B.I.S.
Okay. I'm not asking anymore questions.
That's all right, Scott.
Yeah, that's just amazing.
Okay. That's the way it is.
So did I miss any questions, though, that maybe are out, that you've been asked regarding makeups and calendars and contingency days?
I know I have had a couple people ask me, and I said, "We go on the basis of hours." And, you know, that, obviously, it gets awful complicated after that, so nobody ever pushes the issue.
And I'd have to say, most people think it's on a day thing, not an hour thing.
But, and that's, we technically kind of are on a day calendar, but we submit and report our hours. That's what we track.
So when people are confused, it's understandable.
Because, because we say, you know, the first five days are like the old days. It's five days, snow days.
Right.
You give them the day.
And what hurt us, again, what hurt us last year is we were under the same rules, but we only closed four days. So we didn't have to talk contingency makeup. It was a beautiful winter. We got really lucky with fog. We just never had to get there. Unfortunately, this year, we've had everything: fog, ice, snow, freeze, extreme cold. And so, again, it's another reason why it's a little confusing because last year, we weren't, we didn't do this last year. No, we didn't. You're right, because we didn't get there.
And just, just a point of interest, because, you know, having grown up in Michigan and a lot further north than this, you know, I continually tell people, I said, "Man, we never closed school."
We're soft.
Well, that's true. No, but here's the punchline. I happened to be up there a couple weeks ago when we had got four or five inches of snow here and school was closed. Roads were clear. I drove up to Michigan for a meeting. So I'm in my hometown, and I go to see an old friend of mine, and I says, "Man, what's going on?" And he said, "Well, it snowed and the schools closed. They had less snow than what we did and they closed the door." So apparently, this has become universal. I mean, everybody is concerned about, obviously, the liability issue.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, it is. It's the liability, it's the safety of students, it's the walkers, it's... It's all of those things go into, and, and again, you're never right. If you close, you should have stayed open, and if you stayed open, you should have closed. It is a very difficult decision.
And I can appreciate that.
And we network. Like, again, you know, I often get asked, like, "Well, how do you make the decision?" And we network. Like, we have some people physically driving roads. We have spotters that we work with around the county. As superintendents, we all start talking very early in the morning. We're connected to Defiance Fulton Henry. We, we, we get a, we do. We network, we see, you know, and the storms are different. One storm in particular started in the northern part of the county, and we in Bryan, Ohio, had zero. We had zero snow and we had zero on the ground. And, but north, north of the turnpike, they were like at three inches. So we, we have to, we talk, but we make decisions based on what we're seeing in our district.
Do you have law enforcement involved in that as well?
Sometimes. We typically just have our drivers. We're out, we're out seeing it.
Physically seeing it.
Mm-hmm.
Could you also speak, Diana, to the fact that St. Patrick's School did choose to be in session a day that we did not?
Yeah, we chose to close last Thursday for the fog. And St. Pat's, again, they get to make their own decision. Fountain City makes their own decision. So they made a decision to stay open and had parents transport students. We'll bring up Ford County, too, because Ford County may choose to be in session. But if we close or delay, our students are excused from the attendance because the roads here are, we determine that they're not safe. So the students are excused, and that's why we're in constant contact with them as well. But they make their own independent decision. Thank you. You're welcome. Important topic. Just lots of different layers to it.
There's a quiz.
I've been following this study for a while.
All right, we do have...
Still, I'll still get along, I know.
One other, I'm doing some reports. We had a varsity boys' basketball game this evening, so I'm filling in, doing triple duty here. One other thing I wanted to share with the board and publicly thank our community partners at the Bryan Community Health Center. So our school nurse, Joyce Stanholtz, worked with the Bryan Community Health Center to bring in dental services to our school free of charge for our elementary students. And so I stole Mark's thunder earlier, so I'm stealing yours now. We had 145 students that were examined. We had 142 that had dental cleanings and fluoride treatments. We had 91 students get dental sealants on a total of 311 teeth. And 69 students that require some follow-up care, in which the Bryan Community Center will reach out to those parents and contact them. So that's an amazing program. It's free of charge to our families, and we're super, super excited at the results of that.
That's great.
Very nice.
Athletically, from Mr. Ruffer, who apologizes, it is spring, believe it or not. Baseball and softball started on Monday. Track and boys tennis will start March 5th. And the spring parent meeting for all those involved will be Monday, March 12th at 6:30 in the 6-12 gymnasium. Congratulations to our eighth grade girls' basketball, who were N.W.O.A.L. champions this year. Our high school girls' basketball has a 14-8 record. They play Salina Wednesday in the sectional tourney. Ally Minor was first team All-League. Kennedy Lamerson was second team All-League. And Sidney Lamerson was honorable mention All-League. Wrestling will be at sectionals on Wednesday at Napoleon. Boys and girls bowling, we're both league champions. And both have advanced to the district tourney, and they bowl this weekend, Thursday and Friday, in Rossford. Boys basketball is playing Tenora tonight in Liberty Center on Friday, and they drew Defiance next Tuesday in the sectional tournament. And swim and dive, state-bound, Taylor Petersen diving, Maggie Voight, Hannah Nguyen, Izzy Riggs, Audrey Zimmerman. And Hannah Goodrich is the alternate in the 200 free relay. And Maggie Voight qualified individually in the 50 and 100 free. So congratulations to all of those. And then Mr. Bassett, and then I'm done, and I'm turning it over to Mr. Ray and Mrs. Cox. We are going to start our annual, so here's some new letters for you. We're going to start our annual L.E.P., which is Limited English Proficient Testing, which is an online test called the O.L.P.A., which, Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. Had to think about that one for a minute. It's an annual required test of any of our students who are identified as English not being their primary language. We have middle school and high school, English, language arts, and math departments are reviewing curriculum materials for next year. And we have the state mandated A.C.T. test that we'll give to all juniors next Tuesday, February 27th. Turn it over to you two.
All right, sure.
Please start, Diana.
Thank you.
All right, so we are excited to have the Williams County Leadership Group here tomorrow. There's a group of 12 to 14 area business leaders that will be visiting our classrooms all morning tomorrow. So we are excited to have them there, excited to have them here to see the amazing, engaging lessons that our teachers have prepared. We have our upcoming character trait assemblies for the month of February for hard-working students. Tuesday, February 27th, 3rd through 5th grade is at 1:30. And Wednesday, February 28th, kindergarten through 2nd grade is at 1 o'clock. On February 28th, some of our students in 3rd grade will be taking the alternative test to the 3rd grade reading guarantee. So with 3rd grade reading guarantee, all students have to pass the 3rd grade proficiency in order to be promoted. So on February 28th, we do have some of our students, it's one of three chances, again, besides the fall and the spring assessment, that students will get a chance to pass this test. We do do interventions all along the way, all year, for those students needing interventions. We are celebrating Right to Read Week, March 19th through the 23rd, and the title of it is "Let's Do Smore Reading." So we are, our teachers are preparing for that. They have lots of educational activities involving reading to share with our students. Also that week, we have, on March 22nd, we have not been able to do Grandparents' Day for a couple years, given all of our locations. So we're super excited to have our Grandparent slash Special Friend Day on March 22nd. With each of our grade levels, kindergarten through 5th grade, we're going to have a 40-minute block for each grade level. And that information will be going home very soon to grandparents, special friends, and guardians. Grandparents will spend a day, or 40 minutes, there's a reading activity, there's a classroom showcase where students will get to walk around the classroom and show their special friend or grandparent. And then there will be a special moment photo booth that they can document their adventures together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Yeah, we had an exciting morning today for our state swimmers that went down. Tournament season's always fun, so we had all those qualifiers for the swim team, and then our diver, Taylor Peters, head down or head over to Canton today. So we wish them well with a little state send-off, so we're hoping for some more of that. You know, our bowling team is competing in districts at the end of the week, so we have some strong potential there, so we'll see what that brings. Diana did note it a little bit earlier, but we did have a unique contest winner with Ireland Moore. With the, what she did is she created a 60-second video, and it was on the topic of privacy on your smartphone. And she entered this into the competition, and she landed herself in the top 10. So what that now does is qualifies her for the ability to be a recipient of a scholarship. So if she lands in first place, she can win a $2,500 scholarship. Second place would earn her $1,500, and third place, $1,000. So we wish her well and best of luck with the rest of that competition, so...
Hey, Mark, can we see that anywhere?
I'd have to ask where to access that at, but you know, we can get that to you. Yeah, it's on, yeah.
I think it might have been on our school Facebook page. I think Mrs. Collins, I've shared.
Did she post it out there already? Okay, great. So there you go. And then, so without that, we've also had a lot of music performances happening. We had orchestra a few weeks back, but then, as noted a little earlier, they've been participating in all their O.M.E.A. solo ensembles and district competitions. So they've had a lot of success there. But we do have some just regular school-based concerts also coming up. So we have this Thursday is high school band concert, and then Sunday choir concert is at the Arts Net. The Thursday band concert is actually going to be in our caf, cafeteria, or cafeteria. So Mr. Will's going to try it in there for the first time with the high school, so looking forward to that. We are meeting some state mandates next week. So there's a new state mandate for our freshmen. They have to be trained, not certified, just trained, in C.P.R. and A.E.D. training. So we're going to work with, the fire department's going to come in and train all of our freshmen. So we're going to stagger groups coming down to the cafeteria for about an hour, 45 minutes to an hour at a time. And they're going to go through all the protocols for C.P.R. and A.E.D. training. That's a new state mandate that goes into effect for the class of, let's see, that'd be 2019. No, I'm sorry, 2021. So looking ahead. And then we also have our juniors on Tuesday, then turn it right around and taking the state mandated A.C.T. So all juniors can take the A.C.T., and they can utilize those scores, hopefully for their benefit. See, it is a possible pathway towards earning their diploma for graduation from high school, but they can also use that score when applying for colleges or universities. So, and then our, about a month ahead, about a month from today, actually, we have our 30th Annual C.E.O. Day. It's an event for our seniors. We're trying to get them ready for the real world because that's knocking on the door for them. So what we do is we invite as many local business representatives, H.R. representatives, anyone who has experience in the hiring process, into our building. And we put our seniors through a mock interview process. So every senior is guaranteed to earn or to have one interview, and they go through a set of questions with the business representative, and they get very valuable feedback from them. So they sit down after the interview and they say, "Hey, you did this really well," or "Hey, next time, here's a pointer for you to have a little more success on that question or on that topic." It's a neat experience for the seniors because they get to get that feedback from professionals who live in every day. But we've discovered in the last few years of doing it, it's very valuable for the volunteers as well. They walk out of there saying, "Wow, our kids are, have a lot of potential and have a lot of great things." And it's fun to see what they have to look forward to. So if you're interested, come on out and join. Just let me know. We're always willing to take more people on, so we're looking forward to that. And then on the academic side, our teachers have just been, we met as departments in the last week, and we have a few meetings still coming. We're just finishing up. One, we're looking at our assessments and how our students are performing so we can get some indicators for the state tests that are quickly approaching after spring break. So we're in crunch time in preparation for those state tests. And then, secondly, we had some curriculum changes with new course offerings. So we sat down in our scheduling process with them so that we know what the 18, 19 scheduling looks like as we enter August next year. So I'm busy at work with it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a need to go in, is there anything else that you have, Mrs. Seb?
I do not, no.
Okay, well, we have a need to go into executive session. I don't anticipate any action being taken, but it would be probably under A, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, so on and so forth. And item E, probably, matter requiring to be kept confidential. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session?
I'll sum up.
Syndra, do we have a second? Mike, would you call the roll?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's that.
Thank you.